Good morning. It's nine o'clock, March the eighth, twenty twenty-one, and our regular Commissioner's Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jane Gorda, good morning, Mary Jane.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Judge Rathnall.
Present.
Commissioner Mendosa.
Present.
Commissioner Lisondo.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
Commissioner Garza.
Present.
We have a conference.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Please rise for the sake of allegiance. Play allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, and one home, and one liberty, and justice for all. Item number four, Communications Commissioners. I know we've all been very busy last few weeks, maybe trying to get everybody in our community vaccinated. I think it's been a tremendous effort by everyone involved, the county employees, commissioners, and we've had county staff, a lot of volunteers. Last week was a very successful week, which you might have some numbers on.
Yes, yes, well, we vaccinated a little over a thousand people like last week, so it was a very successful turnout. Of course, we wouldn't be able to do it without the efforts of this Mary Plattner and her staff and all the volunteer nurses that are there, hoping, of course, the fire department staff as well, they're helping us vaccinate. And, you know, being there, you hear, I hear all the positive comments, you know, everybody makes, you know, gives us that positive feedback that it's very well organized, it runs very smooth and efficient. So I think overall, we're doing a great job.
It went very well. It does require a lot of work. I know my staff has been working on one week. Just trying to make those appointments, when you're talking about a thousand appointments, calling in, coming back, verifying appointments. It takes a lot of work behind the scenes to get it to where it's running very smoothly. And I, you know, I want to thank Roxy and Monica, of course, and Cynthia, who our part time is invaluable. I can't manage the office without them. So it's, it's been quite an effort. I think there's been a lot of people involved, but we're finally getting a lot of numbers of teams. I think this week's allocation may not be as large, but I believe we're close to six or seven hundred allocations that should be coming in. I think once we, we have them on hand, we'll plan with Ms. Plattner and her staff and see, we'll allow the public, let them know when, when we'll be doing the vaccination. I think early on, it might be a little later this week, from what I've discussed with Plattner, it might be towards the end of the week, but we will be having a substantial allocation. Also.
The camera's frozen.
As long as the recorder's working.
It's recording, but it's not.
It's on, Mary.
Yeah, it's on, but it's not over here.
We keep having trouble with that new system. We had an old system, didn't work. Now we have a new system, and it doesn't work. It just. But the recorder is working?
The recorder is working, but the camera's not coming on. It's this one of the.
Press OK. Just press OK, Mary.
Hit the OK. Excuse me, please.
Press OK, should be working already.
Yeah, it's working.
It's working.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little issue.
I guess we just let it keep turning on.
Yeah, it was on standby.
Okay, turn on. All right.
Judge, I know that also Gateway is administering a lot of vaccines as well to their.
They administered, I think, four hundred was their allocation last week, two hundred from the state and two hundred directly from a federal allocation. So hopefully that trend will continue. I believe this week, we are getting our first batch of Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And I guess once we call Monica, we'll have to advise the residents that it's going to be the Moderna or the Johnson &amp; Johnson. They might prefer one or the other, so we might have to ask that question once we do the call to the public. But we'll get together with Ms. Plattner.
We are doing second dose on Friday, Judge.
We're doing second dose on Friday also.
Second dose Friday.
Okay, yeah. I know, Commissioner, I think you had a, with the terrible weather we had, it affected our fish population along the lake. And I know you worked extra hard with your crew and volunteers to clean up that fish kill that was, it was on site leave there at the boat ramp.
Yep.
That was what, last week?
That was last week on Sunday. It took, you know, pretty much an all day thing, you know, and we had several volunteers, you know, so I want to thank the volunteers that showed up and helped out as well.
Yeah, I got a lot of good comments, especially from the fishermen that use that area, and a lot of people use that area, that they were so thankful that you were able to get that done.
The crew went by throughout the week, Wednesday and Friday, they did another sweep, so the fish were still going to the banks. But we did another cleanup on Wednesday and I believe it was Friday.
And the types of fish, they were all tilapia or?
They were all tilapia and, I don't know, they're called the suckerfish, the little black ones. Those are the ones that didn't withstand cold weather.
Cold water.
Cold weather temperature.
I'm old enough to remember, back in the eighties, we had a similar fish kill. I don't know if you remember, Commissioner, we were, actually people were going on the banks netting with nets and picking up the fish.
Yes, sir.
So it does happen every thirty, forty years. I mean, unfortunately, those fish can't withstand those cold temperatures. But thank you so much. I got a lot of good comments from the public on getting after that.
Thank you.
I think I have some other things here. Of course, well, now, we all know about the new governor's order that will take effect on Wednesday regarding, well, just about how the state operates. We work currently at fifty percent. It will be a hundred percent occupancy for all our businesses. There is no mask mandate. There is a, depending on the situation, on the COVID hospitalization rate in our area, which includes Laredo. If it's fifteen percent, the COVID hospitalization rate within that area for seven consecutive days, then we can reduce the occupancy. And currently, I think Laredo hospitals are a little over sixty percent, so we'll, we'll, okay, we can continue to stay at that level. But that will take effect. As a county, we had no curfews, anything to that effect, so there's nothing that we need to be saying.
But can we say that we can use masks, that we have to use masks when we're in the county?
Well, masks are recommended in the order. They're just not mandated. So, you know, that's, we can enforce anyone from not wearing a mask.
Can we enforce?
No.
No?
No, not the county. We can't enforce someone coming into our facility without wearing a mask.
Judge, but can the businesses do, like business owners?
The business owners, and many of them have signs to that effect. I think the problem we're going to run into is kind of a trespassing issue where somebody walks in without a mask and the owner says, well, you need to get out because you're not wearing a mask. So technically, it will become a trespassing issue, and then law enforcement will be have to call in. But it won't be because they're, they're not, their mask was not mandated. But I think that's what kind of problems we may have need to run into with those public businesses, I mean, those private businesses. Where, you know, the owners might take exception to that and ask him to leave, and if he doesn't, we'll land basically, that would be a trespassing issue on his property. So we may run into those problems in our community. We'll see how it goes. I think for the most part, here in town, I see a lot of compliance, almost everybody's wearing masks nowadays, but they're not going to have to. There won't be a mask.
County facility, Judge, or community center, facility, are we going to open those up or will they stay closed?
Currently, I think since those facilities are being used for the vaccination effort, I think it'd be important to leave them as is until we, I'm thinking, what, the state, you know, meetings I've sat with state officials have mentioned that this process might go into the summer, the vaccination effort. So I think once we vaccinate the majority of our constituents, of our residents, then we can maybe open them up. I think for now, we're using them either for testing.
Yes.
Or for vaccinations. It'd be hard to do both, I think.
Yeah, because we'll have to reset up everything every time.
Yes.
Library, museum, are we going to?
I think the library, we should probably open that.
Open the park.
Excuse me, please.
Open the park.
The park should be open, yes.
Mine have been opened.
Yeah, the park should be open. We should encourage outdoor activity. I think I did speak with Ms. Gonzalez, with our Nutrition Center Director, about her. She has had a, since the pandemic began, and we've been doing home delivered meals, she's had a high participation rate.
Yes.
In polling, her participants, she states that the majority of them will not be attending the center. We decided to open the center. So for now, we'll continue with that program of home delivered meals. Until the state says, you know what, we're not going to reimburse those costs anymore, then we may have to open the, open the center up. But for now, we'll be doing the home delivered meals, Commissioners, and the library, I'll pick Ms. Alado and see if that's what, I think we should probably be opening up that library soon. I don't think of anything else. I mean, our offices have been open.
Judge, if I may, just for information, my office will be following CDC guidelines, federal guidelines. We don't want to risk my employees. I know that it's not a state mandate, but I will be posting a notice that we require masks before coming in. We deal with a lot of the public, whether they come in trying to, you know, make arrangements for funeral, you know, the box and all. I don't want to put my employees at risk and their families.
Sure.
Allowing people to come into my office without wearing a mask. So we'll provide the service, but I will make the mandate for them to be wearing a mask. That's just in form of the court and the public. But once the federal CDC announces that it's safe for everybody, my employees were very concerned when we first heard the announcement from our governor. Well, I, as an elected official and being in charge of my office, I don't want to put my employees at risk.
Sure.
We'll put a notice that we will be requiring a mask if you want to come into the attorney's office. If not, we're going to ask you that we will not come up to the window and provide the service either by phone. We will be providing service.
Okay, I think that's fair.
We'd like to wear a mask, and I'm very concerned that, I don't think we're at a stage where it's safe for people to walk around with a mask. I mean, it's just a governor's decision. Well, I don't think it's safe, and I'm going to put my employees at risk and their family. Because it might could be contagious. They come in and then they go home and, you know, get their family.
I think the governor, what he was saying, he's recommending that people wear masks. It's just not mandated.
He's just recommending that people, but then he refused, Judge, and I, as an elected official, will be following the federal guidelines, the CDC.
Yeah, I think.
They're still not saying that it's safe because, you know, the pandemic is not over yet.
Well, we've had some serious cases here.
Yeah.
I, we start getting into the legalities of as a, as a public entity.
Yeah.
We can deny a resident service, so.
No, I know, like I said, and I want to make that very clear. The service will not be denied, but not in person. If you're not wearing a mask, I'm not going to allow my employees to be, you know, face to face with a, with a, you know, customer.
Well, you have the story, the bias partitions, and so you have those safety structures, so I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, so just, just in form of the public, we will be following the CDC guidelines, which are federal guidelines, so not as it would be if it's safe. We'll, you know, abide by those, by those guidelines.
Okay. As far as COVID testing, Commissioner, it's still ongoing. It has slowed down quite a bit over the weeks. I believe I had the latest figures. So far, the county has conducted sixteen thousand one hundred ninety tests. We've had, during those tests, fifteen hundred and thirty-eight have come back positive, fourteen thousand and six hundred and forty-two have come back negative. We only have ten tests that are pending, and we unfortunately have thirty-one deaths in our community up to now. And certainly, we, just like other communities, we have some substantially because of COVID. I think, and I do have here that the Laredo hospitalization rate has a three, six twenty-one, is six point five eight percent. So they're well below the fifteen percent that the governor's mandate ordered, his request to. Also, Commissioners, I don't know if we have any other communications. Did I miss something? If not, will we want the public comment? This section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any item on the agenda. Any members of the public wish to address the court? Paul, you had mentioned, sir, that you might want to address the court on an issue on the agenda. Mr. Paul?
Yeah.
You can approach the.
Now or?
Yeah, right now. You can come up.
Okay.
That's fine, and this Commissioner, this is, Commissioner will be for item number thirteen, which is on the agenda. And this is Mr. Paul Yeagley, a resident of Zapata County, and he has some comments regarding that.
Judge, and just to clarify, number thirteen, it says to prohibit firearm in subdivision, charts within ten acres or less. It's not to prohibit, but just the use of.
Use, right, of course, yes.
Because if somebody called, so I can't own a, you know, it's not that.
No, yeah, there was.
So it's.
There wasn't a state fund.
Discharging of the firearms, yes, okay.
Well, firstly, thank Commissioner, Fire Chief, and the Sheriff, for doing what they did for the cold winter. You guys don't get credit for what you do, but I appreciate you know that cold neck we had. You all did really, really good.
Thank you.
Now, this, what I want to get at this is for years and years, like let's say, I mean, we got there in nineteen, there were only three of us living out there. Now there's thirty of us living out there. And to go through my, I'm nervous.
And where is that exactly?
You know, the, they tipped the town and the water town between Ternoso and Garmenio.
Okay, that area, okay, those, those Ternero parcels did.
Well, the one acre parcel, and that's what, that's what the map, the map shows.
Okay.
Through the map, you'll see Agent Three up on top here, and we're on the riverside.
Okay.
And, well, this did actually happen about six, seven years ago. You see, number one is the guy that property who did the shooting. Number two is Potten Lake. If Potten Lake ever fills up, it's at three oh seven.
Okay, I see that.
Government condemned.
Yes.
Then three is my place.
Okay.
Four is the county road, Amadillo.
Okay.
Five is Mr. Bartlett's place.
Okay.
That's where the bullet hit his house. It was like a three oh, three oh eight or three oh, you know, or.
It's a high powered rifle.
High powered rifle.
Yeah.
And, you know, and there was, for years and years, they told me there's nothing I can do about it. So I did some research in that title, seven, it says, you all can do something about it. I can, okay? So the second page, you might have to pull it in, there's got a couple of questions there. You're going to be casting, you know, I'm sorry.
You're doing good.
And I got some corrections we can do, and a couple of years back, let me go through the paper, okay? And then this, if you look at this on paper, it says this, I thought it taken pictures, okay? So I got the pictures, and they're on the disc, if you want to see them. It's more of a, of a reference, so like this one started thirteen oh four, AK forty-seven shows up, thirteen fourteen ricochet. So you want to see what I got, it's here.
So these are all the incidents that have happened?
Yeah, but since I, since I started recording, the time this goes back, I mean, Bartlett got shot, the reason I showed that is because there's two kids riding mini bikes there. Manuel Garcia and his wife Lorena, his son, Marty Mendosa.
Okay.
Grandson, you know, they probably went down the road, and he's up there shooting with a high powered rifle. And I thought it worked with people.
Starting a dangerous situation, I think, if you understand.
And Doctor, the.
I mean, where I live, once Halloween season starts, yeah, it's hard to go outside. There's, there're larger tracks than the Ternero track, but I've got hundreds really close to my place, and I understand exactly concerning you now.
Okay.
And we will, we do have an item addressing that, so we will be taking action on it.
Okay, well, one thing that really concerned me and scared me is that when they did the shooting, and I, the county, Mr. Figueroa, he talked to somebody a couple of years back, and it quit. And then the county, and I tried to talk to the people, and they tell me flat out, it's self profiting, they're doing it wrong, there's no law against it, they're going to keep shooting when somebody gets killed.
Then.
And now there's thirty people living out there, and people tell me, well, you bought the place, people are not supposed to live out there, why they put city water and electricity, and they put a sewer line in. If you don't want people to come, I want to put a shed down here, but I'm not going to put a shed down there if somebody don't put it with bullets, because he does not want to do anything. So, and as long as he's not breaking the law, there ain't no law against it. Why shoot it?
Sure.
So anyway, that might be concerning.
Well, appreciate your concern, and we do have an item down on, right around the meeting, and we'll address it at the, our county attorney should be coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, thank you, Judge. Any other public comment? Now we'll move on to item number six, Commissioners, approval of invoices, and in your package, we had invoices. We had invoices from February the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, through March the fourth, twenty twenty-one, for a total of one million, forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty, eighty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa to approve, seconded by Commissioner Garza.
Judge, in these invoices, those are repairs that came in late after the submission, which was for D and D welding and the fake glue. It came in on Friday.
Okay.
For the repairs, part of the storm damages. I wanted to see if we could include these as well.
What, what, what's the amount from?
The D and D is four six thousand two twenty-four seventy-two.
That's for D and D?
Mm-hmm. And the fake glue is four seventy-five thousand.
Who's D and D?
Six thousand and what?
Six thousand, six thousand two twenty-four point seventy-two.
And fake glue came in then twenty-five. It's the first payment on the.
It's a partial payment for the work that D and D carried out. And then put it open to the.
So you want to make your motion, Commissioners, and approach this to him.
I'm sorry, there was a question there.
Oh.
Uh, she was pressing D and D.
I, I don't, I don't know what it's that from.
Okay.
D and D is.
I'm trying to say my name.
Is that the trainer's place? It's again, that's D and D.
His name is Daniel Garcia, that's all I know.
Oh. And who, what, what department is that from?
It's there, even the storm damage.
I'll resume my motion.
Oh, yeah, I'll modify my motion, those two, do those two invoices.
Okay, okay. So Commissioner Mendosa approves all invoices presented with the additional two invoices presented by Ms. Nelly.
Seconded by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion, although we say aye, motion carried.
Item. Item number seven in the pool of church reports.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to have to, I think for the next meeting, I'm probably just putting it on the laptop and projecting on your monitor and on the screen. But I will email it to you on Friday.
That'll be fine.
So if you'll have.
A little copy of paper.
Yes.
Yeah, even a second paper, since we have all this technology, as from us, and it's put in, you have to get the reports on the laptop, but I have it ready by late Friday.
Okay.
So I'll email it as early as Friday, so you all can.
No more hard problems.
Right, so instead of me cleaning all this paper.
I don't have to. But I can deal with.
So hopefully, you know, I'll put it on my laptop, and I need to be clicking and go on page by page when I go over the report. That hopefully I can have that ready for the next meeting next month. Page number one shows all of the investments that Zapata National Bank uses our depository. And we have a balance of eight million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, six sixty-seven seventy. That's the total of all the CDs there at Zapata National. The interest reported is two thousand five hundred ninety-five eighty-three, and your table is around forty thousand one hundred ninety-two, since I have the investments there. The next page, which is two, three, and four, is a breakdown of all those CDs that I actually hold in the bank from last week. Says we meet the money, have to go into adjustments, and transfer that into our accounts payable, so we can pay the bills. We're making reference to page number five, it's all our checking accounts, and we have a beginning balance of five million, seven hundred and sixty, seven hundred and fifty-five point oh nine at the beginning of February. For the month, we ran deposits of seven million, three hundred and seventy-five, three hundred and twenty-four, forty-six. Then we ran, you know, we spent out of all those checking accounts there, eight million, six hundred and ninety-seven, nine six seven point fifty-seven. And we have an ending balance that we reconciled those checking accounts at the end of February, four million, three hundred and sixty K, two hundred and ninety point ninety-four. A lot of those big amounts for the bond payments that we doing.
Sure.
In the month of February. The general fund had a beginning balance of a million and six. We ran deposits of two million, two hundred and fifty-four. We spent out of there a million and seven, hundred and ninety-two, and we had an ending balance of two million. I went ahead and asked if you could check the balance of the bank this morning. So even though we're reflecting a two million balance at the end of February, this morning, we have a balance at the bank of one million. Following my report, those two checks that were presented by the auditor and then mine to be released, and those totaled over a million, a million four three thousand seventy-three. And then we received a payment from Ms. Mendosa from the tax office. So taking into account the amount that I made from Ms. Mendosa and what's going to be left, I'm going to have a little bit below half a million.
Yeah, we know it's a month to month.
A little bit of dollars in there. So we're going to be ending up with, you know, a little bit over below half a million, but then we have payroll at the end of this week. So that's five hundred plus thousand, so that's when we report that. When we look at these balances, well, yeah, they're kind of big, but they fluctuate. So the interest of the safety, we have the beginning balance of a million five hundred and ninety-six, run deposits two hundred and seven, and then that's where we expense out of there, seven one seventy-five, which is, you know, bond payment. And we have an ending balance of two hundred and thirty-one, because we'll have another bond payment due in August. So I make those bond payments the month of February and August, so that's where you see those big payment amounts. Special break again, seven hundred and four thousand, it's the beginning balance, and then we ran deposits one hundred and thirty-seven. And we spent out of there a seven hundred forty-six dollar bond payment, and then left us one hundred and forty-one balance for the payments that are due in August. Waterworks set a beginning balance of thirty-five thousand at the end of February, but the water department ran deposits for three hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four ninety. We took out of there a hundred and ninety-four thousand one fifty-four, and we left an ending balance of two hundred and thirteen, seven seventy-four twenty-three, which will probably be making some transfers out of there. So we transfer money to our, we process their payments and payrolls and so forth. Page number six, or other checking accounts, other office folders, and those have a beginning balance of three million, seventy-six thousand. There were deposits made of one million, three hundred and five thousand. We spent out of there a million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, and after we reconciled all those, those ending balances, two million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, six eight eight point forty-eight, for those other checking accounts on that list. Page number seven are the toll checks issued, and those told nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, six twelve point sixty-nine. And you're today will issue four million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine seventy-four point seventy-two out of the current office. The rule checks issued out of the general fund, we issued one million, four seventy-four, eight thirty-two, then you have the other funds right there, and all those told three million, eight hundred and thirty-five, four hundred and thirty-one point seventy-two for the month of February. Page number nine shows the electricity paid for the month of February, we had a payment of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-two forty-three. Water, twelve thousand, four forty-seven ninety-three, and then you have a running total of the bottom matrix. We will be updating this report for next month. The front report here is just what comes out of the general, the fund pen.
Uh-huh.
But we run payments from the waterworks, which is another fund, and the.
So it is included in the.
So I'm going to be including all three, so I'm going to update that report to have a better picture of what actually we pay for the electricity and the water. So I'm going to update that report to have a better picture of what actually we pay for the electricity in the water. Because mainly the electricity gets paid from three different funds. The one that I'm giving you right now is fund ten. For next month, you know, while we go back to the now. Uh, page number ten is the, uh, the rate deposit that I get from Shell Corporate Energy, which is for the, uh, gas wells that we have throughout the county. So I believe, I don't know, maybe a total of one or two, I don't know.
First several around town.
So, uh, we get a total amount, the deposit is for the month of February of five thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Do you remember that?
Yeah, the price of natural gas went slightly higher this past month.
And here today, we've done twenty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-one point forty-three, uh, so far, uh, for this fiscal year. And so we've got like a fifty-three percent of what we.
Yeah, we didn't budget very much. We didn't expect the forty-nine thousand, so we might come in a little higher than.
Yeah, I hope it's higher.
Yeah.
So.
Next month will be better.
Uh, the rental, sorry, all zeros, because we're not renting any of our buildings. Page number twelve are some of the revenues. Our county clerk deposited into fund ten, five thousand six hundred and two point five. And deposited into fund fifteen, twenty-five dollars. Our district clerk deposited five thousand four hundred and forty-eight into fund ten. And into fund fifteen, one thousand three hundred and thirty point twenty-five. Our armed ordinance, we had a twenty thousand dollar deposit. And then the sales tax came in at four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-one point seventy-two. And so we have a running total at the bottom, and that was at fifty-eight, uh, point four and a half percent.
I wonder what, I mean, because it's been running about one fifty to two hundred. Was that?
Well, I believe that we got one type of big amount, and I believe that's, remember, we.
They do adjustments maybe throughout the year, or is that?
Or they pay that sales tax, I think, uh.
Windmill project?
Yeah, I, this is mainly from the windmill project. But I don't recall.
An actual dump in the river?
We can, um, certainly call the, uh, state controllers and try to get a, I'll get you an answer now, but I believe that.
That's what they did.
In the past, we got a huge amount like that. Well, I wish it would be that size every month.
Well, that would take care of our.
I'm sure next month it'll come down. Uh, it'll probably drop next month to the, uh, the a hundred and some thousand. But we shouldn't say.
Yeah, I mean, our cash flow problems are real. We see them every year. This time of the year, our tax revenues goes about four or five months, then we're month to month. And it's, uh, it's certainly difficult on all of us.
It's true.
We're going to have to watch out what we spend now, uh, going forward. Yeah, we've, uh, I saw that, of course, the tax center will be giving her a report, but we're up to eighty percent of tax collection. So we're almost got all our taxes in.
Yes.
And, uh, so we're just going to have to go month to month, uh, make sure we don't spend anything that is not absolutely necessary.
Exactly, yeah. And that's why we're just waiting for that phone call from the bank to build from the, the overdraft. So, um, on page number thirteen, uh, for the month of February, our landfills deposited twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-four. Our jail revenues, uh, we've got to check four six thousand four ninety-one point ten.
Yeah, I see the sheriff, sheriff, are we doing better? I budgeted about one point two million dollars for the jail revenues. Right now, we're at seven percent, so we've only brought in ninety-two thousand. Uh, and that certainly is affecting the overall budget, how, what expenditures we have, what revenues we have. Do you expect those revenues to increase?
Yes.
Or we may have to reduce the staff there. Uh, we can't afford having a million dollar deficit.
Well, we still have a few months left, and we did go up. We went up to seventy-eight thousand.
Okay.
Three ninety-six for this month.
For this month, it'll be seventy-eight, okay.
Can I pass this out?
And I know COVID had a terrible effect on our jails, uh, revenues, but, yeah, we, we, as you know, from here to here, we depend on those revenues to kind of, uh, balance our budget. And so if we're going to be short a million dollars, we're going to have to cut a million dollars from somewhere. Morning, Sheriff. Morning, Sheriff. Appreciate, uh, I know you've been, uh, probably being saying that you're getting more prisoners in, so I'm glad to hear that, uh, we are starting to see, uh, some revenues.
As you can see, uh, in the full report, probably.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Um, a judge did report that, that got passed out by the sheriff. Does show an increase for the month of February, if you look at the total of the seventy-eight thousand.
Yeah.
But as the sheriff is saying, he'll have to bill the, the marshals.
The marshals, yes.
And then whatever report is the money that gets cut.
Of course, yes, but there, but he's not even going to see an increase in revenue.
So you'll see there that, uh, he sent out a, you know, a, you know, for the month of February, a, uh, an invoice for seventy-eight thousand, so we're just going to be.
Well, I mean, but that's good, because if you, we've got, what, eight months left?
Yes.
So if we see eighty thousand a month for eight months, that's substantial. So it'll certainly cut back on the deficits, but I, I think that's all good news. So moving forward, we'll start seeing some, uh, some higher revenues coming from the jails.
That is correct.
Yes.
So hopefully, we can increase the population, Sheriff, but.
Well, we will.
By the end of May.
Yes, well, that's going to be a big issue, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
We'll see a bigger number there for what he bills the.
No, uh, no pressure, Sheriff.
Well, we're not, everybody's got pressure, can you have? With when you're. On a tight budget, it's pressure every day.
And, um, the jail law fees collected for the month were eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, and then the jail officer fees, three hundred and seventy-five. Our EMS, uh, deposited twenty thousand six six one thirty-eight. And that's also the common, that's the twenty four point seven.
Yes, it's, uh, COVID has affected our revenues for EMS.
For EMS.
Was there a math? I know that the stimulus package is going through, and it was approved by the Senate, uh, so it appears that might be coming.
That could be a substantial stopgap for us. I mean, it'll maybe help us, uh, if it does come, come, uh, through and then true. Yeah, I think we're in line to receive some beneficial funds that might help alleviate some of our shortages after. So, but I hate to depend on that.
Yeah, we have to, uh, report and I want to get the money, so.
Yes. Which is, I mean, this is a realist. When I see the money, I'll.
When I see the money out. We are, we are on track. Hello, payment is about the county is two point seven, two million seven hundred and seventy-four dollars four thirty-one.
Once it gets approved.
Once it gets approved.
And, uh, will that become, you know, straight from the federal government, or will it go to the state?
It appears that it'll be coming, uh, from what I was told, that that's the thing I got there, the partial of will be coming straight from the federal government.
That's, that's what the congressmen, uh, relate to, but sometimes it's changed. I haven't heard the latest. If the state gets it first, it'll be us. I have the history of.
Yeah, we're going to avoid it going to the state.
Yeah, it'll take some time.
Okay, and we turn page fourteen. Uh, these are the revenues, uh, that they've collected by the JP. Uh, JP number one, twenty-six thousand six seventy-two. JP number two, twenty thousand eight seventy-two. JP number three, five thousand ninety-nine. And JP number four, six thousand six seventy-five for the month. Uh, the following report is just a payroll overtime report for your review and request by the court.
JP number one has been bringing in a staff to the month.
Do you think, uh, do you ask to get? I, I think, uh, you know, I think these are doing well. I, I do get comments from time to time. This is, I guess, because of the, of the program that we're receiving, people are trying to pay their fines, and they're having some issues, uh, paying their fines at the respective JP offices. So I think our JP's maybe need to make their hours more ready and accessible to, to the public. Uh, because I, I get calls on a weekly basis of many people from out of town, many people from out of town that are trying to come in and wanting to pay their fines here at my office, which we can't pay because we're not in the system. And I don't know, uh, counselor, is that something that possibly could be, I mean, I don't know.
A lot of these are delinquencies, Judge.
Yes, a lot of them are delinquents.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're on a level. I've seen that, that are even subject to potential arrest warrants.
Exactly, and that's why they're in a hurry to pay, but, uh, some of the offices have been, for whatever reason, I'm not pointing fingers.
Yeah.
They're just not open.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Yeah, but I thought this new program facilitated the issue of, uh, paying online and things like that, Judge.
Well.
I mean, uh, yeah, I, I, look, I can't speak for whether they're open or not. I don't know if they are or they are not. But, uh, if there is methods to pay online, uh, I'm not certain why people aren't taking advantage of it, considering it's all.
I don't think so. They may, it might not be available on.
Oh, it might not be. It might not be, but I thought that was part of the program that the commissioners were, uh, approved, so. Uh, but if it's not, then we definitely have to.
I think, I think my staff receives, uh, you know, requests for them to pay, uh, at our office, which I, I can't, but I can't accept that. Like, I can't take payments for, uh, some, some payments are being left, uh, with, uh, our, uh, security officer there to make the payment. So I just think our JP's make their work a little harder and try and be in their offices or to.
And those funds are crucial, because they come straight to Rota Bridge, uh, and that's where we, as commissioners, are a little bit harder.
So I'm just, I'm getting those comments. I think I, I passed on my concerns to JP, but I feel we need each other to try to make it work a little harder to, to make these payments come in.
I think we need to look into that also, which is, I'd like to see if that option is available for.
I think not, even if it's not, maybe we can explore the possibility of making that option available once. I know that I attended one of the presentations, but I'm not familiar with their software, because it's not the same, you know, with the company that I work with. Um, but I think our counselor is correct. When the gentleman made the presentation, I think Oregon has a possibility of going online, making a, either using a credit card.
Well, we can send them off in those JP offices.
So the JP's often maybe have to do some posting on their doors and their office.
Either way, we need to do everything possible to still pay the payment, because they're, I mean, we established how much delinquency there was in those courts.
Judge, but I, I, I think that they do, because I know that I had a call the last time, and he called the JP's office, and the gentleman called my friend, and they kind of arranged it to work. He was going to pay online. So I think that they do have.
It might be a case.
Judge, I just talked to Roxy, and there is a link on our website, uh, for people to pay through the JP offices' websites. On our off of our website. There is, there is a link there.
I think more than you can attest to that we get first request on a daily basis from people walking in, trying to make payments.
And it's basically a lot of people who don't have access to internet.
Yes.
And they're wanting to pay and have proof, but they're not willing to do that because they're not there. Or they say, drop off the payment, and we'll send you the receipt, and they never do.
So, so there's an issue. I think there's issues with the office hours that are currently being, uh, those off, some of those offices might be operating on. That, that's, that's just a fact. Uh, so I'm not pointing fingers, but I think we can do better.
Well, another thing that our auditor, I made him aware, Judge, and let him, it's important, though, that I, I got, for some reason, a bill from one of the JP's offices. And I looked at the, that report, and it's the collecting agency that they're use software is using. So I know, Commissioner, if you recall, when they made the big presentation here, sell you the software, and they'll, uh, you know, tell you that we're, they're going to take it a little longer back, uh, that they were going to make the collection of one million dollars the first year. And I said, well, uh, I'll see the numbers. Good luck. But anyway, uh, the fee that those, uh, attorneys are charging us is twenty-three percent, which is, I think it's high. I don't know. I didn't sign the contract. I know that the prior collection of agencies we were utilizing, uh, I believe that the state allows them, uh, counselor, you can look into this, that if there are, uh, an agency collecting these delinquents, um, if I owe a hundred dollars, they tag out fifteen percent, not twenty-three percent. Because that may be coming out from the revenues that belong to the county. I don't know, but I did the numbers, and whatever amount they collected, the total amount at the bottom was twenty-three percent. And they were requesting the county to pay. I said, well, that's, it has to be approved by the individual JP, run through the office office, and then I'll pay that amount. But, uh, we're doing the collection.
During the presentation, I, I don't.
I, I, I don't recall what we signed off on in the contract.
We, uh, apparently the collection agency, we've done very well. Uh, we were collecting minimal amounts from the delinquent accounts that were maybe ten, fifteen years, uh, delinquent, uh, in case.
Right.
So we've done very well. They are adding that, that fee, uh, to the collections. My understanding of it was that they were going to collect, if somebody owed a hundred dollar delinquency, they were going to add, tack on, the county would get the hundred dollars, and they would tack on the delinquencies and fines that, uh, that they would collect on. Apparently not. I mean, because, um, Mr. Salinas brought it up to me, uh, and they are.
We'll have to look at the contract, Judge, to see what we agreed to. I, I, I just don't recall.
But I, I think, I told Mr. Salinas, in the end, I think we, we have done very well with that, with that contract. Uh, we brought in substantial amounts of money that, that hadn't been collected in years. Uh, and, uh, so they are working on it. I don't think we've ever had a successful effort as, as a now, uh, to collect it.
We can look at it, Judge, and I'll, I'll notify the court.
Okay.
You know, our county office from the Sputa, that's a little worrying. Needs looking into the office.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know about the contract, but we've got to look at the law also.
Okay.
I mean, if it was increased to twenty-three percent, fine. But if we're doing the collection and then I'm paying you a down.
Well, in the end, I think the ones that are getting a break are, of course, are, are those that have the fines. They're not having to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars. They're paying a hundred dollar fine.
Well, is that the case, sir? We may have to relitigate that contract, if we modify it, uh, because it should be added on to, the county should be collecting.
That, that was the understanding, I believe, we had, but.
Yeah, Judge, it, it, that doesn't sound right, Judge, just, uh, by what, uh, what Mr. Salinas is saying. But we need to check the contract, make sure they're living up to their, their end of the bargain.
I'll forward your company, it says it's an invoice, and it gets sent from office. And I said, okay, it has to be approved by the individual department. And I'll try to help any of the company at, in those instances, right? There are some invoices that got, you know, lost in, in, in the, in the mail, whatever. You know, I'll contact the department and tell them, you know, here's the popular invoice process, and get it to the auditor so I can pay it. Uh, but the way I, I mean, the reason I found out was that I saw the actual invoice. It was a past due invoice from one of the JP's. And when I looked at the numbers, I looked at the fine, okay, they collected this much, there's a fee tagged on to it, and then you look at the.
I give the fine, Trent.
And it looks like twenty-two percent. So.
I redid it, we went through.
Yeah, but it was not that a difference you was presented, that it would be tagged on to the total.
To the actual, uh, fine.
Yeah, the, the fine of the violation, yeah.
We would get the total fine, and then it would tab on that additional percent.
But there may be some.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know it was going to be discussed, and I would have looked at it.
Yeah, no, and I just remember now that they said, oh.
I'll see, I'll see what we got there, and if there's any.
But I'll, we know it later today, too. I've got everybody's email to all the court, and I'll include you in that. So we often look at the invoice what I'm talking about. And then they, if there's clarification, and they tell us, well, uh, maybe I'm remembering it wrong, but it's very clear. It's on black and white. And any questions?
I gotta give you what's your amount, dude.
Yeah, and I have to go with that amount, so.
All right, Mr. Salinas, thank you.
Thank you.
There's motion to approve the, against the court, if there's any.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Saliz, to approve the Treasury report as presented, although in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Number eight is, uh, pool of checks issued. We have checks from two nineteen point one one through three four point one one, for a total of one million, forty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Commissioner Agatha makes a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Saliz.
Judge, do we have to add the other, the, the amount of the other two invoices to this report?
Uh, these are checks that are already been prepared, Commissioner. But so, we don't, we don't think we have to add them yet.
Is the court made, uh, I think that's the check that was approved, Nelly, right, this, uh, we, uh, you approve it, I think that's the check. It can't have to be.
Do you approve for the two checks, uh, the D and D and the six?
And pink.
Okay, all right, well, that'll.
Same amount as in the invoice.
Okay, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
They're not the same amount, uh, auditor, uh, on the, the total, on the check issued and, and invoices?
It should, it should, man.
For you?
No, they're back, no, it's the, the D and D and the fake gold, there's two, uh, the amounts that we're adding.
Oh, okay.
For the invoices, so we're adding them to the checks.
Okay. Item number nine is, uh, tax successor collector, the pound metal report. Uh, Ms. Mendoza, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Yes?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think you're working.
So, thank you.
Good morning, Judge. Honorable members of this court.
Good morning.
Um, okay, our collection has been, you know, it's been pretty good. Uh, we're showing our current collection for the general fund is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-nine twenty-eight. Our delinquent collection is thirty-two thousand eight sixteen twenty-seven. Our delinquent collection is thirty-two thousand eight sixteen twenty-seven, penalty and interest, ninety-two thousand seventy-eight twenty-three, our total of three forty-seven sixty-five and sixty-nine cents. The general fund, enters from seventeen, we had third collection, a hundred and seven thousand five point five forty-three. Delinquent, twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-six point two, penalty and interest, six thousand nine fifty-two eleven, our total of one point six nine one four oh five. Uh, form to market, very minimal, we have a total of twenty-five dollars and thirty cents. Special Rota Bridge, we have track collection, thirty-one thousand seven seven and seventy cents. Delinquent, three thousand one hundred and forty-three seventy-four, penalty and interest, nineteen hundred and twenty-six fifty-six cents. Our total of thirty-seven thousand fifty-seven ninety-two, total collection, like, a hundred and fourteen thousand nine forty-two forty-eight cents. Delinquent and twenty fees, ten thousand one eighty-nine fifty-two. We're gonna go to our fees, we have tax certificates, twenty dollars, hotel motel tax, three thousand five point eight sixteen, voter range, a hundred and fifty dollars, entrance earnings, fifty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. I wanna mention that, uh, Hotel Motel is still falling behind.
Uh-huh.
Uh, year to date, we have twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-two eighty-nine.
Yeah.
I'm glad our county attorney is, is back in here so that we can, uh, maybe address, try to get those letters out to our Hotel Motel, uh, Hotel Motels that need to be, uh, pushed or something.
The delinquencies?
Yeah, there's a lot of the delinquency with the Hotel Motel tax, so, well, there's anyone who can say maybe notice to those, uh, who's moving.
Have we sent the delinquency notices to MRA?
The MRA, it's been sent.
You've sent, okay, which, uh, round of delinquencies are you in now? Have you just done the initial round or, these are all from the, uh, the motel from October, this past October.
And is it from October, um, from October, we had, uh, there's.
Are you thinking of making quality or on a monthly basis, monthly should be mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, and we see that they're, they're.
They've been busy, uh, there's been a lot of traffic.
Yeah, we see it in the reports from the comptroller, money comes in, but they're not paying their share to, to the county.
And do we have a list of all those, uh, okay, if you could get that to my office, I'll start, uh, looking at it and see if we can, uh, make a few informal phone calls to encourage them to come in and, uh, and pay their, uh, and for the ones, and do we have outstanding amounts beyond just this fiscal year?
I think we should, we should, uh, last year, uh, there'd be some behind.
Yeah, especially on the ones that are very far behind, those are probably the ones we need to, uh, send the more assertive letters to.
I wonder, maybe we can get some phone, uh, no, I guess it would have to like, um, your signature on it.
Yeah, well, just, we'll, we'll look at it, just send me all the information, the list of, uh, the delinquencies, uh, obviously the more delinquents, send those and we'll, uh, start working on, uh, on all those, uh, some of them, it might just be a quick enticement, uh, or just a matter of, uh, give them a quick phone call and say, hey, come on, you need to, uh, settle up, but the, the ones that are more long-term might require, uh, more course of action, so.
Okay, um, so anyway, our tax collection, as you just mentioned, is at eighty, point eighty-six percent collection rate. Compared to last year, it was seventy-eight point twelve percent, so that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mendoza.
We move on to reports and presentations, item number ten is a presentation to report in the Commissioners' Court Minutes, the district cert certification of the appointment of Mr. Pito Montalvez as county auditor to Zapata County, Texas, the Houston, Texas local downtown, eighty-four point zero zero three and one fifty-two point zero thirty-one. So, Montalvez, congratulations once again.
Good morning, good morning.
I see, I see the judge's order in our package.
We're applying it again for, uh, till December of thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Yes, uh, Judge Lopez is reappointing, uh, Mr. Montalvez as county auditor, uh, to serve from, uh, January first twenty twenty-one to December, uh, thirty-first twenty twenty-two.
And this is just a presentation, just again, Judge.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Montalvez, okay. Item number eleven is a presentation of annual report slash parks grant update and conference certificate presentation requested by Mr. Osutolega, AgriLife Extension Ops Agent. Good morning, Mr. Solis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good day, good, good see you guys.
Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, this is just our usual annual report that we like to give, uh, some of the claims we struggle here. Uh, we tried to do it in January, but I was out of the office.
I know, you were, you were ill there for a little while, I heard, but, uh, you're doing much better.
Yeah, I'm still gonna be wearing mask.
Yes.
Um, this year, we're kind of a little bit slow, uh, because of the way things worked out with, uh, the pandemic. Most of our job, you know, is going out and meeting with, uh, producers or trying to, uh, do some outreach. We do a lot of work with the schools, school garden, so when all that got shut down, uh, we, we basically started a little bit, but we still did a few good things. We tried, we got a lot of stuff in before, uh, everything got shut down last year. So this year, we're off to a slow start again, but, uh, again, we thank you all for your support. We're gonna be getting together with our new commissioners, the solis, uh, to kind of fill them in with, uh, what we do and hopefully, uh, really limit to some of our programs.
Appreciate all your support, so I know it's been a difficult year for a while.
I, I did fill out the survey, just to clarify, uh, your performance as the doctor, the line of, so I did submit that.
I've got, uh, certificates for those of you that attended the Commissioners' Conference, uh, back in December, uh, too, I've had them, they're on, they've been on my desk since then, but, uh,
Very good.
Sammy does have a quick update on something, a project that he's working on, that hopefully we'll be able to roll out pretty soon, here and talk about that.
You wanna make the presentation to the commissioners? Commissioner, take a picture with, uh, who else wants to? You all want to take a picture first? Or, Solis, you weren't in office yet.
Hey, if you all wanna get in the picture too?
Okay.
I've struggled to get up.
We did enjoy the football, we thought, also.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's one of the, it's one of the better conferences, uh, they treat, treat us very well there. Yeah, they have really nice devices there. They have.
All right, good morning, uh, Judge.
Morning, Mr. Soto.
Uh, it's kind of just an update, uh, or a heads up, uh, I was able to apply for a, a grant and basically, it's a, a grant to address, uh, connectivity, uh, safe routes to parks and schools, uh, things like that. Uh, there's a, it's a sort of like a, a map of the, the grants, you know, be applying if we do get, uh,
Okay.
approved, uh, bicycle lanes and, and sidewalk improvements, uh, those are the routes. Those are the routes that, uh, that I, that I submitted, it's a preliminary application, so it's not something that's guaranteed. Uh, it's for non-urban, small urban communities, uh, it's based on the, the, the project that we submit, so there's not, there's not a limit. Uh, or there, there is a limit of, of money, but, uh, it just depends on what you submit for the, for the grant. Uh, from previous, from previous, uh, grants that were awarded, uh, usually we, we fall under the small urban category and they've averaged about one point three million dollars, so, uh, I'm working with some specialists from the, from our State Department, uh, so they're gonna give us kind of like an estimate for, for, for what I submitted and then they'll, they'll, they'll tell us, but then, it, it just depends, you know, this is a preliminary application and if we do get, uh, approved for the second, uh, step or criteria, uh, I'll let you guys know and then, and then we'll see.
That, that would address Minoponos, Commissioner?
I know that's what I was gonna ask him, because I know that Ophelia called me, Judge, uh, saying that she lived into it for the, for the sidewalks.
They're on Minoponos Street, along the Valley Elementary.
Yes.
So basically, it's, you know, it's to address, uh, uh, safe routes to parks and schools and that's kind of what I submitted, because it's, uh, Yagala Elementary, High School,
Yeah.
uh, following Glen Street, we have a couple of parks there, uh,
Very nice.
Pre-Sanford all the way to Promela, uh, and then I submitted, I think it's around, uh, North Elementary and, and New School, on Animal Street, Seventeenth Street, so hopefully, you know, we get some good news, uh, I did submit it, uh, yes, last week, and, uh, I mean, you, you guys have any questions?
Well, I'm glad you're making that effort, so, hopefully you'll have some good news.
I'm planning to, you know, I, I wanna start a committee, a community committee, get some community input, uh, hopefully the, our commissioners, uh, could join us and be a part of that, so that we can get more input from them as well.
Right.
So, I'll let you guys know, that's, that's been closely.
Thank you, Tommy, thank you.
Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The gentleman, per view.
We'll move on to the action items, Commissioner, we will delay to consider action. Item number twelve is to approve overtime payment to county employees for extra work due to COVID-related services.
I'm going to approve this.
Excellent.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Pupus, coming in first, Gasa, any discussion, although in favor, say aye, I, I, motion carried. Item number thirteen is to prohibit the use of firearms and subdivision of tract of land of ten acres, uh, or less.
Yeah, I would like to hear the items, uh, that's, that's, please.
Okay. Item number fourteen is to approve payment to Martinez Electrical Services LLC with an amount of fifty thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventeen cents for repair to Zapata County Arena.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Gasa, seconded by Commissioner Solis, uh, so it works out, you've been known, yes?
Yes.
Okay, although in favor, say aye, I, I, motion carried. Item number fifteen is to approve a contract between Zapata County and the Texas Association of Bass Club for the annual state championship bash tournament. Commissioner, Mr. James Vendely, uh, from Capulay, Texas, said that this tournament had been approved by the court last year, but because of COVID, it was canceled, uh, he wants to see if, if the, the court would be willing to, uh, I guess, once again, approve or, or, or the commitment that we made last year will.
I was looking at here, I think it does mention, uh, using the, uh, the, the seven.
Yeah, for, for the, for the mule, for game.
Yes, I think, uh, I, in speaking with him, I, I could not commit, uh, the Civic Center to that, I, I said we could, uh, commit to maybe using the open air pavilion at the county, uh, boat ramp, so, yes, uh, if, well, he put in here, COVID-nineteen restrictions are lifted.
Yeah.
We can, uh, you know, uh, remove that, because I said, uh, I, I wouldn't commit to that and I'll think the court would commit to, it's something that, right, right now, we're not, we don't have the use of. And, but it, it is a ten thousand dollar funding, uh, amount, uh, for this tournament.
Well, I would do.
Can we bring it back for our next Commissioners' Court, it won't be too late.
What?
And it's first of September.
September.
Bring it back with the restrictions or funding.
The, the money's, Commissioners, as you know, the Hotel Motel Fund is bringing in very little. There is a, a balance of, uh, fifty-some thousand, but some of that is already allocated to other, uh, organizations. Uh, so in, in the end, this might have to come out of our general fund, which is also depleted. Uh, what he's stating is that we had made it, uh, we had approved, uh, that request, uh, last year. He's wanting for us to, to approve it, uh, today, because he needs to verify and make the commitment to, to the bass clubs or else they will, uh, take the, the tournament elsewhere.
Do you want any boats are, are, would be coming in?
He's, uh, there's approximately twenty-five to thirty bass clubs, I don't know how many bass clubs, but he said there's several hundred boats that will be coming into, uh, uh, well, is there four teams of, of, of two anglers from a fund?
Fourteen.
So each, there's over, uh, I guess a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty?
Judge, I make a motion to approve with the, uh, that we just check into the, the area that he's claiming for the meals, if we can.
Just, uh, we'll commit to the open air pavilion.
Yeah, I checked it in.
Motion by Commissioner Lisondo, uh, to approve the, the commitment of ten thousand dollars, but only, uh, committing, uh, facilities, uh, will be the open air pavilion at the county park, not the Civic Center. Seconded by Commissioner Gasa or, or Solis, with the Solis?
No problem.
Although in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item, uh, number sixteen is to approve Ashram Company Consultant LLC contract for managing the Zapata County Twenty-Twenty County Transit Station Infrastructure Fund and to coordinate with Texas Department District Office. Commissioner, this is for the SERC's, uh, grant, I think all of, uh, all the commissioners that selected the streets.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think, uh, the PM, Mr. Escher, is requesting to manage, uh, that is a ten thousand dollar fee from the total amount of a hundred and, you, you need to step up, Mr. Soto, to advise the court or anything with the SERC? I, I'm looking for the street, I, I get for the public to know which street.
On the first, uh, Jeff, we submitted a, uh, a revised.
Oh, that's all.
Application to, uh, to Rocking, to Mr. Escher.
Yes.
For, for the street that we're gonna be, uh, improved, and, uh, on that one, we had, uh, Dominica Street where.
Dominica?
Yeah.
Dominica Road, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking to put in some, uh, some covering better on that one, and then, uh, I think we had an intersection there on, I think it's Losano Street.
Uh, that's Montalvez Street, Yarimar Street, Minoponos, Pelican Street and Second Street.
Yes, those are the streets that we're looking to do improvement, that we reduce the amounts on the contract. On one of those, I think it's on, uh, if, if you look at the, the amounts.
Yes.
That, that, uh, are shown there, on some of them, we had to take off the list, because of the funding that was, uh, allocated. We had requested a four hundred thousand dollars and Texas came back and only approved, uh, because a hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Right.
So I'm not sure that is the, the latest.
That, that, that's what's on it, yes, and I think, so each commissioner is, was gonna get about forty.
Forty-six thousand.
Yes, correct.
Okay, in improvement.
Yeah.
Okay, that, okay, so, uh, and, uh, Mr. Escher will, uh.
Yes, Judge, I have made the motion, uh, Mr. Escher has literally worked for us, uh, with other projects, so I have motioned that we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Gasa, uh, and then, uh, I guess, Mr. Pedro, I'll review the, the contract, because Mr., he did provide a contract, this little.
I have not seen it yet, but, uh, I'll review it, uh, and make sure everything works.
Okay.
If I made that, uh, the, they will be requesting that the, uh, the county submit some plans for those few improvements, so we will be, uh, our, our fees are in that, uh, potentiator that you had there, so we will be submitting, uh, a contract, uh, like Mr. Escher, for the amount that everyone wants for that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Soto.
Thank you.
Although in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to, uh, number seventeen is, uh, to authorize legal counsel to pursue available legal remedies, including by not limited to files of court petitions to collect on delinquent water service account from Shady Haven, Allosee, I think there's another executive session item, Commissioner. We'll move on to resolutions and proclamations, we'll first call that item shortly, is to approve a resolution, a designation, an engineering service provider for the Twenty-Twenty-One Bolonia Construction Fund, Texas CBDG Community Development Fund Application and Project Related Engineering Services, Commissioner, uh, that, uh, we did, uh, have a committee score, uh, how many applicants?
There were two, uh, Premier and CD and CD.
Because based on the rating sheet, I make a motion that we, uh, award the project to Premier.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, to, uh, uh, follow the committee recommendation and award the engineering services, uh, to Premier Engineering, any discussion?
I'd just like, I'd just like to add, Judge, uh, there were two, uh, there are only two scoring sheets, I talked to Ms. Raya, uh, I talked to Ms. uh Ralia uh Calviness with Grant Works and she said that would suffice.
Okay.
Only everything.
Okay, we got a motion and second, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Right, it's true. Well, that is another project. Again, project, this is for, I think, some substantial improvements if if it's approved uh to uh some very badly needed areas. I think we've got some drainage projects in mind. And uh I think uh this would include repairs of the uh, is that the groundwater storage type of?
The the stand pipe.
The stand pipe. So hopefully we'll uh put in a a good project and and get approved for for funding.
That would be uh, I have some ideas. I'd like to maybe uh meet with uh
The commissioners.
The commissioners on an individual basis.
Yes.
For see what uh what they have for for their precinct, but I have some ideas with uh, I don't know, potentially uh on the stand pipe, but then also maybe considering something, I don't know what the cost would be, but maybe I can provide you some estimate on maybe uh looking at doing an interconnect with uh Pacun.
Yes.
Uh Pacun River Water as an emergency basis.
Yes.
And if it's within reasonable cost, that might be something that might benefit uh our residents here in Zapata, but also that are being further required in other waters.
So that interconnect, what we would still have to have an agreement with Sister Shore?
Um, we we may be able to, we may be able to do an MOU between Sister Shore, Zapata County, and Pacun River Water. So there'll be three entities.
Yes.
That would be uh because the there's uh Sister Shore is an in-between entity between Zapata and Pacun River Water. And so maybe we can do the three entities uh like an agreement type of uh.
But but are you just wanting to include that in the in in for this project?
Well, I don't know if they can. I don't know if if you've if you've already submitted anything.
Selected three projects.
Okay, well, if you've already.
Well, I don't know if they've been submitted, but we we had a a committee uh, I guess workshop and uh and the the commissioners came up with a project of doing some drainage improvement projects in Valle Verden and then of course in Marine Edition and then the stand pipe project. Those were the the three projects that were selected. There may be additional projects that we can include on on. I mean, I think that's a viable project.
Yes, the the stand pipe project uh potentially could be uh linked to the uh water services. Because the the stand pipe uh project would be a water service type project for precinct one.
And would that qualify as first time water?
No, no, they would.
Are extending that that line over to.
They would not qualify as first time water because they're currently water. But uh the usually the flooding agencies, the what I've seen is that they uh give uh I guess points for interconnecting different different uh uh water districts.
Okay.
So this case would be interconnecting three three water districts together. So they give points for that and and but like I said, I don't know if if the cost is prohibitive to add it in it, you know, uh or maybe if it's already submitted, then they might not be able to.
That might be something that we'll discuss with with that one.
Yeah, we we can check it with the grant writer and see that.
And it's part of the project with the stand pipe, you're saying?
That's what I'm thinking.
Because there's already a project for the connection between us and and Sister Shore, right? But that hasn't, funding hasn't come through yet.
They are not funding through USDA.
Right, but it's it's still hasn't been approved or?
It it's been approved. It it's they don't have their money yet. So they they have been approved for the funds. Well, they're requesting for additional funds.
Okay.
Uh they're requesting for, I believe it's like uh an additional two hundred and twenty-seven thousand to cover the all their improvements that they're doing to the water system.
I I I spoke with the the managers of Pacun River Water and they really want us to help them uh connect uh that do that interconnection. They have a such low water pressure for some of your constituents here, Commissioner, and Mesa Sabina and the DePoisana. I know you've dealt with them, especially with the freeze and uh and frankly, they sit there at the tail end of of their service area. They have very difficult time providing adequate uh water service to the people.
I think the long the long term goal would be for us to acquire those customers from our county lands more.
That would be.
Of course, that's a long term plan because that would that would take a lot of long money, but uh I think that would be, that's a good long term plan.
But that interconnect certainly is something that might might be doable.
We do service their customers. Well, it's our constituent, our county constituents, but we do, we do have the sewer service. We have the CCN, which is the service area belongs to Zapata County for sewer. So we service uh sewer services in Chihuahua and that that belongs to the to the county. So we don't have the water. The water does come from Pacun River Water. But eventually, uh long term, like mentioned, Commissioner. Would be uh ideal to have all of our water districts and and the county has already incorporated Tally Now Two and Ramia Noa, and so they're now part of Zapata County water. We're interconnected with Highway sixteen, which is a different water entity, and now we're in the process of connecting Sister Shore and Zapata. And then so if we could connect the Pacun River Water, uh then you would have all your all your water distribution entity together.
I think those those residents living in those areas really would like that help.
Yeah, absolutely. We can't allow something to happen again like what we went through.
Oh, no. It was more than twelve days? Yeah, about twelve, thirteen days.
There's uh some ideas that maybe we can go on workshop, then we can uh. If we can. There's funding for it?
Absolutely. I think we can include it, Judge, and if if uh, because I don't know that we'll cap out at the limit of of uh what the limit of on is for that task. So there's money left over that we can include.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Uh we got uh.
Nineteen.
We we voted on this, right?
Nineteen. I make a motion to to approve it.
Commissioner by uh Garza makes a motion to approve consent item line item transfers. Uh that's the item nineteen, that tax office twenty-five hundred uh from scanning preservation to twenty-five hundred to equipment management. Seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, although in favor say aye, I motion carried.
Judge, I make a motion to go to that session.
Motion by Commissioner Garza to enter to adjourn the session. Seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, the items to be heard are item number thirteen is to prohibit the use of firearms in subdivision with traps of land of ten acres or less. Uh and also to authorize legal counsel to pursue available legal remedies including by not limited to filing of court petition in the length of the length of water service account from Shady Haven LLC. And these will be learned under.
I think I'll do it.
I think we're on.
I make a motion to go back to regular session.
Motion by Commissioner Garza to return to regular session.
Second.
Section by Commissioner Mendoza. For the record, no action was taken in executive session. Item number 13 is to prohibit the use of firearms in the subdivision with tracts of land of 10 acre or better.
I make a motion that we adopt enforcement of section 235.022 of the local government code. Authority to regulate, promote the public safety, the commissioners for the county by order and prohibit, or otherwise regulate the discharge of firearms and air guns on lots that are 10 acres or smaller and are located in the unincorporated area of the county.
Second Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Arizondo. Any discussion? Although the pair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 17 is to authorize legal counsel to pursue available legal remedies, including but not limited to filing of court petitions, petition petitions to collect on delinquent water service accounts from Shady Haven LLC.
Just motion to adopt the resolution certifying delinquent water service charges and all attached exhibits and to authorize Font Cruz and Associates to seek any and all legal remedies to collect their liquidity.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Arazza. Any discussion? Although the pair say aye.
I make a two adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Arazza to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arizondo. We are now adjourned.
Judge, just with clarification.
Commissioner, you all need to sign the.
See.
Okay, we're gonna change.
But we can stretch it out.
Yeah, you could do that. And then I'll help you. Just keep that one to if you want to. Just with clarification, Judge, the Texas Supreme Court issued out a ruling in reference to local courts whether required to have in person, and they have left it at the discretion of the individual judge of the court. So, if you want to, you can continue to resume whatever you want.
Okay, so you have a minute?
We can, if you want.
I'm going to say.